City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, 3:00 PM, September 1st, 2020. Have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams, please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we just come before you, Lord, thank you for all of the blessings that you've bestowed on our community. Lord, we pray for those that were affected by Hurricane Laura, Lord, those without power, those who lost their homes, businesses, Lord. We just pray, Lord, for you to show them the way, and, Lord, for help to come, and for there to be answers to all of the dilemmas that they're facing. But we pray for those who are affected by COVID, and we pray for a successful vaccine. And, Lord, we pray for our nation, that there'll be peace across our nation, and for wisdom for us in this council meeting today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please place the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Frey?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Announce them.
Bossier City Council meetings will still be streamed live at our website, boziercity.org, under the City Council section, and Southern Link Channel 12. In accordance with Louisiana Revise Statute 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet quorum requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to the meeting, they can email their comments to thecityclerk@boziercity.org prior to the meeting, and those comments will be read into the record. We will also set aside some time at the very beginning of the council meetings to allow for public comment on any agenda item in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You may call 318-549-4595 at this time to make your comments, and you will be placed on speakerphone. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question and answer session, and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please no foul language, or the call will be disconnected, and you will forfeit right to speak.
All right, when do we allow the public comment, before now?
Mr. President, there's no comments.
All right, thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18, 2020, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin, did yours not pop up?
I'm not seeing it.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Unfinished business?
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to conduct repairs to the airline drive in Murphy Street Gravity Main at a cost of $250,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 82 of 2020, increasing the appropriated amount to $169,080 to match the final application using sewer capital contingency funds, final reading.
No move.
All second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need, and provide for salvage, provide for donation to the city of Boyce Police Department in accordance with law, final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $200,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund to be used for the landscaping project for the Century Link Center, final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-20, Century Link Center lighting
Counsel, the engineer's estimate is $650,000. There are three alternates on this bid opening. There's one addendum that provided a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, general notes, changes and clarifications to electrical specs and plans. The first bid is from Cato Electrical LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $539,000, 539-000. Alternate one is $128,000, 128-000. Alternate three is $120,000, 120-000. And alternate three is $84,000, 84-000. The next bid is from Camus Electric Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is for $577,650, 577-650. Alternate one is $135,300, 135-300. Alternate two is $121,500, 121-500. And alternate three is $94,125, 94-125.
Bless you.
Hey, Phil, just for the record?
Yes, sir.
On the first one, Cato Electrical, you know, two and three was, I think she said alternate three and alternate three twice, so we just want to clarify that.
Alternate two was $120,000, correct?
For the first bid?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and alternate three was 84.
Okay, thank you.
The next bid is from Faisal Electrical Company Contracting, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is $553,965, 553-965. Alternate one is $140,717, 140-717. Alternate two is $105,85, 105-085. And alternate three is $90,127, 90-127. The next bid is from HMR Electrical Contracting. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $536,700, 536-700. Alternate one is $133,300, 133-300. Alternate two is $121,700, 121-700. Alternate three is $103,800, 103-800. And the last bid is from Willhite Electric Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The base bid is $553,115, 553-115. Alternate one is $140,08, excuse me, $140,180, 140-180. Alternate two is $129,930, 129-930. And alternate three is $101,035, 101-035. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Where did we get the engineer's estimate on that one?
I believe it's perled. Perled.
It was perled, but there was, the estimate was based on how much the Public Service Commission would provide.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-21, police building lighting project.
Engineer's estimate is $161,180. There's one addendum that provided a list of the attendees at the mandatory pre-bid meeting, general notes, changes to electrical plans, plans, and added demo specs. First bid is from Cato Electrical LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $128,000, 128-000. The next bid is from Camus Electric Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $101,000, 101-000. The next bid is from Faisal Electric Contracting, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $117,297, 117-297. The next bid is from HMR Electrical Contracting. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $113,700, 113-700. The next bid is from Hope Contractors of Shreveport, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The next bid is from Streeter Service Electrical, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $181,045, 181-045. And the last bid is from Willhite Electric Company. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $123,330, 123-330. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-22, Public Service Complex Lighting Project.
Engineer's estimate's $175,300. There's one addendum which provided the list of attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, general notes, changes to electrical plans, and added demo specs. The first bid is from Artisan Electric Services. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $104,600, 104-600. The next bid is from Cato Electrical LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $82,000, 82-000. The next bid is from Camus Electric Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $76,000, 76-000. The next bid is from Faisal Electric Contracting. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $88,567, 88-567. The next bid is HMR Electrical Contracting. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $93,500, 93-500. The next bid is from Hope Contractors of Shreveport, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $143,000, 143-000. The next bid is Streeter Service Electric, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. And the last bid is from Willhite Electric Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for $88,600, 88-600. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Pam, excuse me, just one second. Would you mind, and you don't have to come, I was just going to ask if you would inquire, we've got roughly $160,000 left between the second and third bids, that if you can use that and apply back to the Century Lane? And just let us know. That way, we can utilize it in whatever else is needed out there. Do you have that, those additional funds? Thank you.
Unless we don't get no change orders. I can't hear you without, um...
Unless we don't get no change orders.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair water main located on Panther Drive at a cost of $33,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pulley Construction, Inc. for completion of work. Final, first and final reading.
No move.
I got a motion by Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the temporary but unforeseen reduction of the wastewater treatment plant's maintenance staff. As an interim measure, the city will enter into a contract with Utiliserv to provide preventive maintenance activities for the wastewater treatment plant system while these open positions are filled and a new staff are trained at a cost of $60,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, first and final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to prevent and repair flood damage due to Hurricane Laura at a cost not to exceed $250,000 to come from the Disaster Reserve Fund, first and final reading.
No move. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law, first reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing positions to be filled in the Bossier City Police, Public Utilities Department as a result of a retirement and resignation, and to increase the salary range of the vacant Assistant Superintendent position, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget, first reading.
No move. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to fund improvements to the Sun City and Eagle Bend Pump Stations at a cost of $170,000 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund, first reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance leveling, levying, add valorem taxes on a taxable property within the limits of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, for the year 2020, and providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof, first reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $500,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund to hire Attacka Paw Services, Inc. to clean and inspect portions of Bossier City's storm drainage system, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the contract attached here, too, first reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, I'd like to ask Mr. Roshnback to come up and just kind of give us a brief synopsis of what Attacka Paw has taken out of our storm drains in the past. Nothing complicated, just the volume, though, was...
Oh, I don't have the volume, you could ask, I don't have a volume, but...
Truckload.
Several hundred cubic yards, which would equate to nearly 100 dump truckloads full of debris out of the storm system. So, you know, it seems like every day we find a new place that needs a little attention, and that's where they're out working and doing, so...
And this will drastically help with any flooding that has been occurring, you know, throughout the city, whether it be the central, south, or north part of the city. So, it's just another ongoing service that we're going to accomplish and make this city a better place to live and work, so, thank you.
Yeah, the intent to be, to be less reactive and more proactive with that. Thank y'all.
Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $150,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund to hire Urban Systems, Inc. to prepare a track fit signal synchronization study for North Bossier City along Barksdale Boulevard, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the contract attached here, too, first reading.
No move. Questions from the audience? Council, along these lines, the number-one issue with taxpayers in Bossier, by far, and the mayor can attest to this, is traffic, and it's been that way for a long time, and I think this study is certainly due. Well, I've joked and laughed about the fact you can stop four times between Viking Drive and Brownlee Road, and as well as South Bossier on Barksdale Boulevard. And this study will allow, hopefully, for the lights to be synchronized for those that are my age and older. You remember how the signals used to be set for 35 miles an hour or 45 miles an hour, and you could go all the way through and make your way without stopping, where when you start that, then you start stacking traffic. So, the purpose of this, and as I appreciate it from these engineers, is that is a possibility, and that's what they're going to work on. So, hopefully, in the next year or so, and working with DOTD, we can get these lights on those three major thoroughfares, that being Airline, Benton Road, and Barksdale Boulevard, which is Highway 71 South. Get those lights synchronized, and everybody can enjoy a little peace of mind going to work and coming home from work, so... Any other comments? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two jailers for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for the Bossier City Council to approve the use of Bossier City water at Fairburn Office Park to serve a new commercial business, first and final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for public utilities, first and final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property of, or rights to property for Moore Properties LLP through institution of exappropriation proceedings for street and water projects in connection with the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Parkway North Extension Road Project and Waterline Project, first and final reading.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve recommendation to reappoint Pam Glorioso as a Commissioner of the Board of Commissioners for the Bossier Housing Authority, appointment effective August 1st, 2020, and expires July 31st, 2025.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve recommendation to reappoint Terilyn Hooks as a Commissioner of the Board of Commissioners for the Bossier Housing Authority, appointment effective August 1st, 2020, and expires July 31st, 2025.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve recommendation to reappoint Tommy Chandler as a Commissioner of the Board of Commissioners for the Bossier Housing Authority, appointment effective July 9th, 2020, and expires July 8th, 2025.
No move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number one for the Walter O. Bigby Water Main Improvements Project for an increase of $54,936.29. Total cost of contract with increase $1,914,876.29.
No move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number two for the Animal Control Edition Project with an increase of 53 calendar days.
No move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Before we conclude, Ben, could you give us an update on the Carriageway Phase One South and Phase Two North, please?
Not much to report today that's in addition to what y'all learned a couple of weeks back. We're still waiting on Artemen, the geotech firm, to complete their seepage analysis, which requires soil borings, which require permits before we can bore to get the seepage analysis. So, hoping to hear from the Core slash Levy Board this week and begin that process. Currently working with NTB and TRC on the schematics needed for the DOTD submittal. There's a lot of traffic going back and forth to make sure we get the DOTD permits and we give DOTD the information they need. We talked a couple of weeks back that we had the 30% submittal approval from UP. We've got one more submittal package to be sending them, which is the final set of documents stamped, sealed, signed, delivered. We're in the process of reviewing those documents now, so expect to have that to UP soon. And then, you know, just grinding away on the various utility companies to get them out of the way so we can begin work.
In the Phase One South?
Phase One South is 80, almost 90% complete. So, they're, I don't know if you've been out that way, but it's starting to really look like something out there.
Yeah, I had the luxury of going around that half roundabout and I almost had to go in the ditch because people were in the lane. So, it ought to be interesting when that's completed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mayor? All right. Thank everyone for coming and I wish y'all a great week. Meeting adjourned.